Welcome, everybody. This is the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, July 20th, 2021, at 4:30. And we will call to order. Commissioner Dana Beasley-Brown has a couple guests to introduce.
Yes, I am very excited and honored to have invited the Board President and the interim Imam for the Bosnian Islamic Center to lead us in our opening prayer for two important reasons today. The first reason is because I was unable, unfortunately, to attend the proclamation to recognize the walk to remember Srebrenica, which has been recognized in Bowling Green since 2015 to raise awareness of the brutalities and injustice that occurred in Srebrenica on July 11th, 1995, that systematically massacred 8,372 innocent lives. Many of the Bosnian Americans in Bowling Green have been affected by this, and their collective story of resilience is such a beautiful example of human strength to overcome and achieve the American dream right here in Bowling Green. And the second reason is because today is Eid, and Eid is a special day in the Islamic calendar. It's kind of like our Christmas, and it marks the end of Ramadan, which is a month-long fast. So I want to wish a warm Eid Mubarak to everyone celebrating Eid here today in Bowling Green. So now, if you all want to step forward, it is my honor to introduce Nihat Nuhanovic, and he grew up in Bowling Green. He went to Moss Middle School and Warren Central. So Carlos, this is your moment to say, "Go Dragons."
I was a Moss student, but I'm going to go Dragons.
And he is now a successful entrepreneur as the owner and operator of the Vet City Transportation, which is a trucking company that employs around 35 people. And he is active in the community and currently serves as the Board President of the Bosnian Islamic Center. So I would now like to turn it over to you, Nihat. Yes?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for inviting us. Thank you for having us here. Those are very kind words from you.
Oh, one moment. I think the mic is having issues. You'll not be the only person who needs this microphone, so we need to get it checked. Oh, we got it. Good.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here. It's an honor to be able to represent the Bosnian community here in Bowling Green. Those are very kind words from you, and we today is the Eid of Fiter, which this, we have two Eid holidays during the year. This one actually resembles the pilgrimage to the Mecca, Saudi Arabia, and that's one thing, and another thing is the sacrifice of an animal, and a lot of times sheep or whatever, and be given out to the neighbors, to the family. Here with me, I have Ahmed Palovina. He's our interim Imam or minister, if the Imam does not sound, ring a bell, and he's going to be doing the prayer for us. So.
In the name of God, the most compassionate, the most merciful, our Lord, thank you for all the blessings, so many of them, that you have bestowed upon us. Our Lord, we humbly beg of you to bless us with the essentials, strong faith, pure and soft heart, and good character. Our Lord, strengthen our character and help us be the change that we want to see in the world. Please forgive all of our shortcomings, mistakes, sins, the hidden and the open, big and small, the ones done out of ignorance and the ones done out of intent. Our Lord, bring into our lives peace with our own selves, peace with others and the environment we live in. Bring into our families, communities, societies, and the global village the attitude of care, mercy, love, kindness, and respect, so that we all grow healthy, productive, and strong. Our Lord, bring peace into our world and stop those who spread intolerance, fear, and terror among the nations. Our Lord, help faith leaders and the followers of their respective faiths realize that the norm in human relations is not conflict but coexistence and mutual cooperation. Our Lord, help us understand that we are all sisters and brothers in humanity with the same needs, hopes, fears, and aspirations. Our Lord, remove from our hearts all types of hatred, jealousy, pride, anger, envy, and all the other ailments of the hearts, and replace them with love, joy, comfort, contentment, sincerity, compassion, and generosity. Our Lord, remove from the human, brothers and sisters, all hardships, difficulties, anxiety, depression, and sadness, and increase all of us with a sense of peace, justice, honesty, patience, and perseverance. Our Lord, heal us from all kinds of diseases and grant cure to all the sick around the world. Help us realize that we are all together in this struggle for the better world. Our Lord, help us understand that acceptance of others, openness towards them, and respect for them, is the sign of meaningful faith and the highest level of strength, character, and that the desire for revenge is the first sign of weakness of faith and character. Our Lord, if we lose our wealth and property, please help us to attain hope, hope that one day we will have it again, even more than what we lost. If we do not attain an intended success, please give us power to overcome defeat. And when we lose the blessing of health, please reward us with the blessings of faith. Our Lord, when we fail and sin against other brothers and sisters in humanity, help us become strong enough to accept and acknowledge our mistakes and shortcomings and apologize to them. Acknowledging one's own mistake is the first step to rectifying the wrong. Our Creator, when our brothers and sisters in humanity sin against us, give us strength of forgiveness. Only great among us would humble themselves and forgive. Our Lord, help the diverse communities here in Bowling Green and in America cooperate with each other, as brothers and sisters should, as we are, with the goal in mind that we all have to act for the common good of all citizens and the American nation. Our Lord, help us build Bowling Green and America that would be the model of pluralism in the world and the example for others, and help us be its best and most faithful citizens. Our Lord, help us promote understanding and dialogue over bitterness and pessimism. Our Lord, cure humanity of hate and fear of the other. Our Lord, help us spread peace and treat every human being with respect and dignity as he or she deserves, as we would like to be treated. O merciful Creator, stop the oppressors and help the oppressed wherever they are, in our own community or abroad. Our Lord, help the oppressed see the light of ease and peace, and let us be instruments of justice for them, and guide the oppressors, does not matter who they are and where they come from, to see the light of goodness. Our Lord, bring sense into lives of humanity, a sense that will help them establish justice for all and have this justice prevail across the globe. O God, have mercy on those afflicted with natural disasters such as COVID-19 or human beings' selfishness, such as conflicts and wars. Our Lord, if we forget you, do not forget us. Ameen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you'll remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is things, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome, everybody. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide our roll call?
Commissioner Beasley-Brown, here. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. A little quote, "When you have confidence, you can have a lot of fun. And when you have fun, you can do amazing things," by Joe Namath. So just wanted us to remember that, just while we're here tonight, just a little brevity. I just also want to thank the families that are here tonight to support the promotions, because this is a family endeavor, and we thank you for serving along with the members that are being promoted tonight. Mr. Mizel, do you have comments at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I would like to say a thank you to Stan and Janie England, who spearheaded our junior, city junior golf tournaments for boys and girls. The boys was held last Thursday at Paul Walker, and the girls was held just yesterday at Paul Walker. I think we had roughly 40 boys and girls, ranging from six to 18 years old, even if they didn't have golf clubs to play with. We provided those. Stan put all that together. We had putting contests for the younger ones and had a really good turnout. Stan got a lot of great sponsorships, and we had a lot of great volunteers that helped with this. Mr. Lawrence White was the chair of the volunteers. I think you all know Lawrence, does a lot of good things for the community. Charlie Anderson, Melissa Bailey up at WKU, Glenn Baker, Jeff Blair, Mike Dowell, Will Griffith, Bob Hoveius, Linda Klimper, Tom Lawrence, her magistrate, Ronnie Moore, Billy Neighbors, Ben Sexton, Tom Thomerson, Chief Mitch Walker from WKU helped us. Landon Watkins, Arlie White, and Barry White, I think, related to Lawrence. So I think they're brothers, right, Carlos? So I want to thank all of them. We also had coaches, boys and girls at Bowling Green, Jay Hollis and Adam Witt, and Coach Gary Mizaros, boys coach at Greenwood there, and Coach Eric Holman, girls coach of South Warren. It's a really good event, and a lot of great sponsors. I want to thank all of them, and a lot of good corporate sponsors provided breakfast and lunch, and all put together by Mr. Stan England, the promoter of a lot of good things here in the community. And Stan is very passionate about the youth golf programs here around Bowling Green and does great work with that. So I'd like to thank him and his wife for putting that together. So. Not to mention our own Brent Belcher and our Parks Director, and as well, our Golf Director, or I'm sorry, not Director, but he's head over, Paul Walker in Hobson Grove, Chris Kendall, played a big part there, too. So next item is, there'll be a need for closed session. I'd like Ashley to read the reason.
Pursuant to CARA 61810C for discussions of proposed litigation against the city, and F for discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee without restricting the employee's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of general personnel matters in secret.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Roll call, please.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
First item up is the approval of our minutes. Everyone has those to review. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Roll call, please.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-123.
Municipal Order approving the permissions of Michael Myrick to the position of Police Captain, and Jennifer McShane to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
So moved. Second.
That was unanimous by everybody, but I'll give it to Commissioner Hill, and second by Commissioner Beasley-Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you all recall, we added a captain position in the Police Department with this fiscal year budget, FY22. We've had a shortage for captain position in the Patrol Division. I've had some really big span of controls, and I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Brian Harold to come up and make his recommendations for Chief Delaney, who's out of town for training. And Brian, will you take it away?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. I want to start by saying thank you for your support and investment in the success of the Bowling Green Police Department. To offer some perspective on this captain's position, presently, we have three patrol captains, one for day shift, one for evening shift, and one for what I'd call midnight shift. Evening shift is the busiest shift we have by far, but it only has one captain, and it leaves that captain with a span of control of 29 people, 30 counting the captain, which is four sergeants and 25 officers. Given the call tempo that that shift dictates and a span of control having that many, we felt it was prudent, and with your support, we will add a captain to B shift, evening shift, to break that span of control into a more manageable number, so that captain will have two sergeants and 12 to 15 officers, and will certainly increase our efficiency and leadership and make us a better department. So thank you. Your investment will be used quickly. To talk about those we're recommending a little bit today, for those to get to this point, each of these individuals we'll discuss had to exhibit a history of character and competency. They had to submit a request for promotional testing, receive supervisory approval to seek that promotion, pass a written exam, pass an assessment center, and score in the top five among their competitors to get here. After careful consideration, we have great confidence in our recommendation for two individuals. First, we propose Master Police Officer Jenny McShane be promoted to the position of Sergeant. Jenny McShane was born in Germany and raised in Ireland before moving to Chicago. She graduated from John Hershey High School in Arlington Heights, Illinois, and went on to attend Indiana University. She graduated from Indiana University with a bachelor's degree in chemistry and a master's degree in ergonomics. She also served as a part-time officer with Indiana University before we hired her in June of 2013. Since that time, she has received significant training in hostage negotiations, collision reconstruction, and KLEC instructor training. Her special assignments consist of crisis negotiator, defensive tactics instructor, acting sergeant, police training officer, KLEC certified instructor, and collision reconstructionist. Her family in attendance here today consists of her husband Byron Penicuff, her mother Eileen McShane, and her mother-in-law Phyllis Vance. Second, we propose Sergeant Michael Myrick be promoted to the position of Captain. Michael Myrick was raised in Dixon, Kentucky. He graduated from Webster County High School and went on to attend Kentucky Wesleyan College, where he played baseball, and later graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. He was employed as a substitute teacher for a short time until we hired him in November of 2005. Since that time, he has received significant training in FBI Supervisory Leadership Institute Training, Criminal Justice Executive Development, Academy of Police Supervision, Team Bowling Green, Southern Police Institute homicide investigations, Southern Police Institute sex crimes investigations. His special assignments and promotions consist of being a member of the criminal, of the Critical Response Team, an instructor for the Bowling Green Law Enforcement Academy, a detective, a patrol sergeant, and a detective sergeant. In attendance today is his wife Lauren Myrick, his father Randy Myrick, his sister Lindsay Henderson, his niece Leia, and his in-laws Mike and Linda Hudson. Are there any questions?
We're very glad your families are here, and we will have a roll call. Make this official.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-124.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Kenny Woods to the position of Building Maintenance Mechanic in the Public Works Department.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? This position was vacated recently by Landry Spears. Some of you all met Landry, did a great job for us. He went back home to, I think, Berksville, Kentucky. We have a recommendation for appointment. I'd like to ask Aaron Holsley to step up and make that recommendation for you.
All right. Good afternoon. I will tell you that Public Works Department was a little bit nervous when Landry announced his resignation. Landry did a really fantastic job for the city and we're grateful for his service and wish him the best in his future endeavors. But going through with that, we did receive 18 applications for the position. A couple of them were internal, the rest were external. The department reviewed 11 of those applications, and we interviewed six. The interview panel included Greg Meredith, David Hayner, and Tiger Tulley. So they were very excited to meet Kenny Woods, who cannot be with us tonight, but he's a graduate of Warren Central High School. He's been self-employed for several years, being in business for himself, running a construction remodeling business, and they're very excited to have him join the team. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-125.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 202137 for fiscal year 2022 street overlay from Charles Dewey's Construction, Inc. of Franklin, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $1,599,045.20.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel?
This is our annual overlay contract that we're bringing to you tonight. We went out for bid and received two bids, one from Scotty's Contracting and Stone, and one from Charles Dewey's Construction. Bids came in, and to pave 18 miles of streets and do 57 handicap ramps, replacements, and to also repay Fairview Cemetery Number Two and Mount Moriah Cemetery, we are going to propose that we go with Charles Dewey's Construction in this amount of $1,599,045. Greg is here, answer any questions. In your packets, you have a list of the proposed streets that will be paved in this coming fiscal year, and as you know, this is an evaluated process that Public Works does. It's pretty much as scientific as we can make it to make it fair and objective, and Greg is here can answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Mayor Alcott, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have citizens who are always curious about how we select the roads to be repaved. So if you would just explain that for our citizens on how we do that.
Sure. And I think, like Mr. Mizel said, it's an evaluated process. We actually go out and individually drive, or we pay a company to come and evaluate all the roads. So each road is driven once every three years. So all the city streets are evaluated once every three years. So with that, they look at things like the roughness of the road, they look at cracking, they look at joint failure, you know, where kind of the middle of the joint comes apart. They look at stripping, if some of the fine aggregate on top are gone and the road is really rough, they look at that. So, you know, that and the age of the pavement all go into what's called a deterioration curve. So we kind of measure the suitability of the asphalt surface based upon that curve. And so it takes all those things into account, and it's a scientific method of recommending certain segments of streets. They're all broken into segments based upon blocks. And so when they recommend those streets based upon that machine evaluation, we go out and actually put eyes on it, you know, in person. So every street that's recommended to be paved is actually evaluated twice. So Melissa Cancel, our city engineer, is kind of over the evaluation process and selection of the roadways every year. And so we take out, based upon the average cost, the average unit bid of what asphalt costs, we can predict, based upon our budget, how many miles of roadway we can resurface. And so with that, this year, with our budget, the roads that we've suggested that amount to about 18 miles are listed in the packet there. So that's the kind of the short story of the evaluation. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. That's very helpful. And then, would you mind explaining, in case people do look this up to see if their street is included, explain what the overlay means, what edge mill means, and what dig-out area means, if they see that next to their, oh, and then the stripping only is the other, or striping only?
Striping only, yeah. So with the edge mill, if there's curb and gutter along the edges of the roadway, when we resurface, we can't just resurface and leave it up above the curb. So we try to tie that in, and there's a milling machine, you've probably seen it going down and grinding up the pavement, and what that does is bring the old surface down below the curb, so when the new surface goes in, it ties in smoothly. So that's the edge mill. The other one you talked about was the dig-outs. That's where the pavement has failed, and so just going over the top with an inch and a half a surface is not enough to fix the structural failure. So we have to dig it out and kind of start from the bottom up. The other striping is just where the pavement's in really good condition, but some of the striping is worn off over time, you know, scraped off if there was snow plows that, you know, scrapes the road. So it's just to put that striping back to make it safer.
Thank you so much. That's all I had.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-28, this is our first reading and is non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing one acre from LI Light Industrial to GB General Business located at Zero Russellville Road, presently owned by Vita Nova LLC.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley-Brown. Mr. Mizel?
This is One Acre Live.
One Acre Parcel on the corner of Old Tram and Russell Road. It was voted on by the Planning Commission. It was a 12-0 vote, and Ben Peterson, our Planning and Zoning Director, is here with us tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Being here, Mr. Peterson. Let's see, it's a 12-0 vote. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Thanks for making the trip. All right, roll call.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-29, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 2.9987 acres from AG Agriculture and HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at Zero Louisville Road, presently owned by JJEM Properties LLC.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel?
Another unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning to rezone this three acres on the corner of Louisville Road and Bristow Road. Again, Ben is here to answer any questions you might have.
Discussion from the commissioners? All right, roll call, please.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-126.
Municipal Order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Bowling Green International Festival, Inc. to lease Circus Square Park and designated streets for September 24th and 25th, 2021, and further waiving the normal rental fees for the rental of Circus Square Park for this event.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley-Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey.
Bringing this annual event to you again, this is brought to you because it's to get your permission to lease Circus Square for free for the International Festival that's been going on down there every September for many, many years now. The lease is pretty much the same as it has been for many years. I don't think there's any significant changes here. Hillary has looked it over, and so has Brent Belcher, and there's a nice layout of what they're planning to do for the festival that's on September 24th and 25th, that they'll be using Circus Square Park, a lot of activities and events, looks like, that's proposed on this map here. And I believe they're gonna, we're gonna close off one lane of traffic on the perimeter of the park for pedestrian safety. So I'll try to answer any questions you might have. Hillary is out of town, and Brent Belcher is not around either. not around either, but I'll, he had something else to go to, but I'll try to answer any questions. But it's pretty standard, what we've been doing every year, but need your approval to give it to him for free.
As, as normal, is the city gonna participate? Are we gonna have a tent and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Great.
Well, I'm sure Lada will have a nice presentation.
Usually very nice. Yeah.
So yes, we'll be, we'll be participating as well.
I just want to say that I'm thrilled that we get to have the International Festival back this year. I really missed it last year, and I normally have to, you know, go without eating for a while, because I want as much room in my stomach as possible to try everything. So I'm really excited that it's back.
I haven't counted all the booths, but there's, there's a lot of, gonna be a lot of booths there, so.
Breakfast, lunch, dinner.
Yeah.
Whole day.
All right, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Mrs. Jackson, do we have any public comments tonight? Will you check, please? All right, we have no public comments. We will announce a couple of things. The next meeting will be August 3rd, 2021, and this chamber is at 4:30. We also announced on 22 July, we have a special working session, which is this Thursday, to discuss homelessness in our community and listen to our Bowling Green Helping Agencies. That will be at the Sloan Center at 4:30 PM. So.
Ballroom A.
Right. We have received a significant amount of public comments. I'm working to put that into a slide. I've pretty much done with it, and we have received about twelve different agencies that have given us input prior to the meeting, and we'll also have that in the slide, and I'll have that to present to the Board of Commissioners on Thursday. Listen from our Helping Agencies, and then we will be able to have open discussion with our Helping Agencies and our Board of Commissioners. So that will be the agenda, and Kentucky League of Cities is also assisting us. We'll have Tad Long there. He will be facilitating as a third party to keep everybody on track. All right, we will turn, and then we'll go to a special session. Thank you, everybody.